This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Review for Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. This meeting is called to order. We will start this way, we will start the meeting tonight in one of the best ways to possibly start, and that is with Dr. McGowan honoring some Brighton Believers awards.
We're so excited to have another group of people to ask you to recognize tonight with the Brighton Believer Awards. As we've explained before, the Brighton Believes Council selects nominees to receive these awards for demonstrating the Brighton Believes' character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. The award winners are students, teachers, community members, staff members, coaches, and the nomination form, of course, is on the website at bcst.org. What a great way to think about the work in the district and the incredible contributions of so many wonderful people. The first wonderful person we'd like to call up to be recognized tonight is Maureen Wedgwood. Maureen, can you come on up? And if I could ask Maureen Jeffries, LaShara Evans, and Allison Rio to please come on up as well. Is this like a history of FRES? Maureen, we should ask you to tell us some stories about all three of these people while you're up here. You've got the goods. Maureen Wedgwood, the FRES Administrative Assistant to the Principal, was nominated by former FRES Principals Maureen Jeffries, LaShara Evans, and current and former FRES Principal Dr. Allison Rio. They wrote, "Maureen is the quiet foundation of FRES. If a teacher, parent, or student needs to find out just about anything, Maureen will have the answer or figure it out in no time at all. She knows the staff, students, and families, and goes out of her way to make connections with everyone. Maureen exemplifies the traits of Brighton Believes." Although her job title is Administrative Assistant to the Principal, it would not be odd to find her in the cafeteria covering lunch duty with students, dancing on the stage at talent show with the FRES hamster. Of course, with the hamster. Helping students at parent pickup at the end of the day, and even walking a class from one room to the other to help a teacher. Her dedication to the Brighton community, French Road Elementary School, the staff, and students is simply outstanding. She is one of a kind, and everyone who has the chance to work with her can see that. Maureen does not love to be in the spotlight, so this is particularly wonderful for her at this very moment. So celebrating her with this award will not be her favorite thing, but she is such a wonderful example of a Brighton believer. Her love of the school community and care for every person she interacts with goes above and beyond each day. Maureen is kind, respectful, responsible, and operates with integrity in all that she does. For these reasons, and so many more, Maureen is deserving, very deserving, the Brighton Believes Award. Congratulations. The next Brighton Believers Award, Renee Popolardo. Nominated by Principal Matt Tappan and Assistant Principal Maureen Jeffries. Renee is a Counsel Rock Teaching Assistant, nominated by Principal Matt Tappan and Assistant Principal Maureen Jeffries. They wrote, "Renee Popolardo is an amazing, kind, incredible person, and we are so lucky to have her as a teaching assistant at Counsel Rock." Renee began as a TA at Counsel Rock in 2016 and as a part-time employee, but then became full-time in 2020. Renee embodies each of the Brighton Believes' traits. She is one of the kindest individuals we know, always checking in on fellow staff members, making connections with kids and families. She goes above and beyond with everything that she does. It is clear, working with kids and in a school are her calling. She takes her responsibilities as a TA incredibly seriously, working with small groups and individually with students as needed. She is one of our TAs that teachers compete to get in their class and get her working with their students. She is definitely in high demand. Every day, she models each of the traits of Brighton Believes in her work ethic, caring nature toward the world, and incredible dedication to our school and community. It is with the greatest of pleasure that we recommend Ms. Renee Popolardo to receive this amazing award. Didn't even mention all your years of supporting your husband in CYO basketball, which was like a job in and of itself, so good to see you. Steven Bowle in a second grader Counsel Rock, come on up, Steven. Nominated by Principal Matt Tappan and Assistant Principal Maureen Jeffries. They wrote, "Steven started Counsel Rock this fall." You made this big an impact this fast? I cannot wait to see what's gonna happen. This is amazing. Anyone in the building who has had the pleasure of interacting with Steven knows that he consistently demonstrates the Brighton Believes' characteristics. Steven is a role model for his peers and stands out as a respectful, caring member of our school community in the way he interacts with adults and peers. Steven's teacher, Mr. Koch, had this to share. "Steven is amazingly resilient. He moved to a new state and school." Almost none of us have ever done that. This is pretty incredible. "Then moved to a new classroom after he started here at Counsel Rock. He accepts and takes on every assignment and doesn't even blink, even when he faces tasks that are challenging. I appreciate Steven's character the most. He is positive, kind, friendly, hardworking, and simply good. If another teacher or student is having a rough day, I've sent him on missions to be around that person because it's guaranteed to be an uplifting experience." Could you stop over in our office? "He adds a calm and happy vibe to our room, and he can work with anyone. His peers and teachers all enjoy getting to work or play with him. We are so thankful that Steven joined our school community. Steven exudes positivity and makes the day brighter for those around him. Thank you to Steven's family for sharing him with us each day." Steven's family, can you raise your hands up? Thank you for bringing us to him. You made us better, so we're thrilled to have you here, Steven. Congratulations, Steven.
One more huge round of applause.
Thank you again for giving us the opportunity and for recognizing these wonderful people in our community. Great job, everyone.
Thank you. Yes, I would say that as much as we would love everybody who wants to stay to stay, we also allow that you might have things like homework and other things to do at home. And if that's the case, you can slip quietly off the back or side door.
LaShara, you can stick around as long as you want.
Yeah, exactly.
She's coming down.
Hey, Dan Goldman, I don't want to tell you how to do your job, but if you just put a smiling picture of Steven on the next thing that goes out in the U.S. Mail, they're gone. It's all good. Content won't matter. That's great. As always, in every public session, we have the opportunity for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the agenda. First off, item four is approval of tonight's agenda that you all have received. Motion to approve.
Still moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
You've also received the minutes from our February 28th, 2023 Business Meeting. Any edits or changes to those minutes? Motion to approve those minutes as written?
Still moved.
Moved by Julian?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we're gonna ask Mr. Alamo to do a facilities update. If he looks a little different, it's because as of yesterday, he's a year older. I mean, who knew?
Twenty-six.
Sammy, I'm forgetful. How old am I really? Great, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm giving a presentation on Facilities Plan and the proposal that we have upcoming this May. At the Budget Review last meeting, we talked about pairing our operating budget with a capital project. So to further support of that, I wanted to give a brief history on where we've been in our capital project planning and what's proposed going forward. So looking at the history, we had, going back to 2012, we had been spending and pairing with our operating budget, a capital reserve drawdown each year. And you could see from 2012 to 2017, we were completing about $1.4 million of construction each year. And generally, I put the scope at a high level of what we were accomplishing then. You'll see a lot of building condition survey items in that it's core systems, very little investment in our educational program, very little modernization of our instructional spaces. So having that history and having that kind of pay-as-you-go financing strategy led us to an opportunity for greater investment. And so in 2017, we had the Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan, which was intended to be a multi-year plan that encompassed both building condition survey items as well as modernization. So that was $64.9 million. There was a couple more authorizations subsequent to that as we ran into things like asbestos and unforeseen conditions. So then, we pivoted a little bit, and we went from the pay-as-you-go model from the $1.4 million to leveraging our building aid and our capital reserve to try to achieve a little bit more. So in 2021, '22, we had a $5.1 million authorization. Then in 2022, '23, we had $7.2 million authorization. And you can see the difference in the scope. We start to get a little bit more extensive in what we're able to invest in the interior of our facility. So '21, '22, you know, locker rooms, makerspace improvements, we did the stadium lights, and certainly, we also took care of the core building systems with the roof replacement. In the '22, '23, we're doing a high school gymnasium renovation, complete renovation of our high school gymnasium, and we're also doing that. So we're being responsible in investing in modernization of our facilities, but also obviously maintaining our core structures. So now, we're at an opportunity, as we've been talking about over really the last two years, we have a drop-off in our debt service and an opportunity for reinvestment in our facilities. So this number is updated from our last Business Meeting, but we're proposing a $19.5 million capital project to be considered by certainly the Board of Education and our voters in the May referendum. What that would include is music suite renovations, complete renovation of our music suite at the high school, our industrial technology suite, so if you think about that, corridors, two corridors, first and second floor, the addition of a greenhouse, something that we lost as part of the 2017 project. If you remember, we had a mini greenhouse that was on the interior of the science wing, and it was on a roof that needed some rehabilitation, so it didn't make sense to put it back there, and we deferred it to do a more comprehensive investment in our science program. At the middle school, we're looking at, again, core building systems, our exterior doors, elevators, flooring, but we're also looking at the Home &amp; Career Suite, and that all suite of instructional space, and looking for an investment in there as program evolves and as opportunities for more maker space. We'll have that authorization to invest in, and we'll build a program for that. At French Road, more core systems, ceilings, HVAC work, but then the exterior of the building needs some rehabilitation, and then we're also looking at increasing security within that front vestibule, where the security guard sits right now and the connection to the main office. So we're always thinking about safety and security. As we look at these strategies and we go to the $64.9 million, that was the only part of this plan that had a tax impact. So everything that we were paying cash for from 2012 to 2017, we're with district reserves, no tax impact. In the 2017 project, we proposed a plan that would have about a 2% increase on the tax levy. Since then, we've committed to zero tax. We've committed to stability in the tax levy, leveraging our capital reserves, leveraging our building aid, so we're not levying any new additional taxes. Dr. McGowan always uses the phrase, "Once we have that car payment, our commitment is to keep that car payment over the next decade." And that's still what we're talking about today. So even this $19.5 million is at no additional tax impact. It's what we already have in our debt service budget. So we've talked about this. I'll just briefly go over the improvements that were part of the 2017. We've had multiple presentations on it. At Counsel Rock, certainly, the addition, complete renovation of that school environment. French Road, library, media center, the cafeteria renovations, art music suite. And I'm focusing on the modernization, because that's where we needed the lift in that car payment to be able to invest in that instructional space and improve our programming from a facilities, physical environment standpoint. Twelve Corners Middle School, you see the modernizations, the cafeteria, the library, music rooms, fitness suite, all great additions that seem to be very well valued by our school community. And at Brighton High School, certainly, we had the art rooms, the auditorium was a big piece of this project, our science rooms, and other investments there. So this is what we presented back in 2017. So what we were, as we were going from 2012 to 2016 with the pay-as-you-go method, we actually were receiving more building aid than we had any debt. So we had a negative tax levy. So those dollars that we were receiving in building aid were essentially being deflected to support our operating budget. And so the commitment of the Board of Education was to say, "We need to build in that payment so we have a consistent investment and maintenance of our facilities." The problem is with the tax cap, this negative levy that we had was needed to offset any future debt first. So when the tax cap looks at it, it doesn't look at on a project specific. It looks at cumulative total debt minus building aid, and then you adjust your tax levy. So any new debt that we came off first had to be absorbed by this building aid, which had already been deflected to operations. So that's been the lift over these last really four years, is to make sure that we had this investment in facilities stabilized. So this is the chart we've been showing over really the last couple of years, and if, just comparing the two slides where we thought we would be on the capital, just over $2 million. Based on our use of reserves and the financing that we've been able to secure with our strong financial position and good credit ratings, we came in less than that $2 million mark. And this, again, is the opportunity for investment where our financial consultant said, "You have the opportunity for approximately a $38 million project that we could complete construction, combination of modernization, investment in program, as well as our core building systems, maintaining what we need to, being responsible building owners, with no additional impact to the tax levy." So what's the percentage of the levy that we're raising right now for taxes would stay stable. We wouldn't be levying any new taxes, but we would continue that same portion. So what we're thinking about in the discussions that we've been having as a facilities planning team, as an owner-architect-construction-management team, is to spread that $38 million over two referendums. The first being in May, which I talked about, it'd be $19.5 million. We need to increase it a little bit. And again, we would accomplish this work for $19.5 million. But then, we're also looking at a December referendum that would include some site work. And the reason, part of the reason we're splitting it is because any site work requires an environmental review. So it's gonna take us some time, if the board's supportive of the scope that's proposed, to do all the State Environmental Quality Review Act requirements. So traffic studies, if we're looking at reconfiguring the high school parking lot, if we want to invest in a community turf field in the back behind the church property that we acquired. Those are two areas where we're recommending investment that we feel would be an appropriate use of the Brookside proceeds. So we're thinking about the proceeds from the sale of Brookside, investing that and recommitting that to community assets, and the most widely used community assets are our athletic fields and our schools. And particularly, our high school is really the center and the hub of our town for all kinds of activities, including, you know, farmer's market, things like that. So we're looking at using those proceeds, leveraging building aid, and creating a site plan project that would be no additional cost to the taxpayers, but it would not be part of kind of replenishing that car payment. If the board is agreeable to that scope with the site plan that requires the work, we would also be recommending in the December time, an additional $10 million that, again, we would prioritize for modernization as well as building condition, structural type items. So back to the May referendum, what we're proposing right now, again, it's about $19.5 million, and these are the financing considerations for any capital project. We have the construction costs. We have to have construction contingency for, one, when we bid it, and then, two, if you open up a wall, something happens, we need to be prepared, and we need to prudently plan for that. Then we have the incidental budget, which is our architect fees, our construction management fees, the legal costs with debt issuances, the financial consulting costs. All those things are a percentage of the construction budget. They add up to about $3.2 million. And then, because we have to borrow, we have to plan for capitalized interest or DASNY costs. So that's essentially the bridge between when we have to issue the debt, when we need the bond proceeds, to when the building aid starts coming in. So that acts as a bridge. So of the $19.5 million approval that we're asking for consideration for, only about $14 million actually goes towards construction costs. And this is a more detailed breakdown of what's being proposed in the May referendum. And with this scope, the board then would, at the March 28th meeting, consider the environmental impact of this scope, and would also be considering a capital project resolution for the $19.5 million. So with, again, with the board's considerations, that's what we would like to present at the March 28th meeting. Next steps, obviously, it's the board's and the superintendent's consideration with what we're proposing as far as the scope and the financing plan. And then, if the board is agreeable to site work plan using and leveraging the proceeds of the Brookside sale, then we would begin the environmental review for that piece of it, which could take six months, as long as that process takes. So with that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions.
We obviously had an initial review of this back on February 28th. Lou sort of went over a master plan. It took some time with us to do that. Other questions that you might have? I will note, Lou, and you'll have to correct me here, part of how we look at how we make the high school entrance safer and as part of some of the student letters that I've received, there was actually some of the students going, "It's not a safe environment coming into school or leaving." We will have some dependencies on the DOT because Wynton Road is a county road, so they'd be involved, and everyone sort of says, "All we gotta do is put up a light." It doesn't work like that. There's a review that Lou talked about, a traffic study, and we'll have to work with the county on what they are comfortable with. So I don't want to act like that process is certain. We absolutely want to make it safer, but the road, pun intended, to get there won't be straightforward or easy. Anything you would add to that, Lou?
No, sir. That's excellent points.
I would just, two comments. One, thank you for this, Lou, and for giving us this long-term perspective and a plan that's gonna make a lot of sense in terms of continuing to foster and build our capacity long-term from a capital perspective, but financially to be in such a great place. The road issue you just mentioned, for people who would not have known this or might be newer to the district, we have pursued a light on Wynton
Almost across Newton.
Right, at Newton. And the county studied it and said it would really slow things down. We kind of thought that was the point, actually, but apparently, that's not optimal for traffic. We also thought that was the point, but they said our option would be to move the light back from Greenwich, which also didn't seem to make a lot of sense because of the number of students that cross at Greenwich coming from the neighborhoods. So we're really hopeful that as we redesign that, we're able to make the case that that makes more sense. It would help if we were paying for it. That's the other issue for them, so we'll look at that. But, you know, we've most recently wanted a slower speed limit in front of this campus on Monroe Avenue, and we're also told that unfortunately, it would slow things down, which, again, we thought was the point. So we'll continue to advocate with the county and see what we can do on that regard. I would encourage people to contact the county, though, and express their displeasure with that.
Anybody who's driven down Wynton in the morning or in the afternoon on the same line on Monroe understands the challenges we have and the safety challenges. The other thing you've mentioned, Lou, obviously, was the Brookside sale, which is, I'll say, imminent but not complete yet. We expect that to happen relatively soon, and there will be an announcement of some sort when we do that. So other questions for Lou on this?
I guess I'd just love to clarify for the public about the necessity of doing the two different referendums and how the need to do the environmental impact study makes it necessary to move to December. Can you say a bit to that a little bit more?
Sure.
About how the bidding, how the, you know, first the seeker and then the state ed process and then the bid process influences when we choose to go for referendum?
Sure. So the board cannot even consider a capital project referendum until the environmental quality review is complete. So anytime that we would disturb site and building an athletic field, even if it's, you know, in kind replacement, there would need to be studies done. What Mr. Davis had talked about, though, with the impact of traffic, that takes the most time. And they were 100% dependent on other agencies. When that's impacted, NYSE, the State Education Department, excuse me, does not become the agency of jurisdiction. All the other state agencies or local agencies also have jurisdiction then. So that process likely could take months and months, just the traffic impact alone with the reconfiguration of the parking lot.
And we choose to do, to then separate out in May because as soon as that referendum, if that referendum were to pass, then we can get started right away on the process of getting our plans approved and then going out to bid.
Correct. So that's an excellent point, because if we moved from the pairing of capital projects from May to December, we have more opportunity to hit that next, well, that two summers away. I can give you an instance, the '22, '23 capital project we approved in May. It's still an SED approval right now. So what was approved in May of 2022, we're actually not gonna be able to do any of the work until 2024. So capital projects now with the design periods and with the state authorization are at least a two-year impact. That's why certainly, we presented the purchase of the church property with this as an objective or something that we want to consider. And I think we need to do what we said we were gonna do with that, but we have to consider the timing. So having that December vote kind of cuts off that six-month period where we can get a shovel in the ground sooner.
Thank you.
Just final note, for a great number of projects, you have a two-month window, basically July 1st to August 30th. On some projects, you can, but there's a lot that you cannot. So the construction window is so tight, you gotta have everything set up and ready to rock and roll, as it were. Any other questions for Lou? Thank you very much, Lou. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item seven is a budget review with Dr. McGowan and I think a few of your team.
Thanks, Lou. So this is just a quick update. I'm gonna start with the fundamentals of where we are in terms of revenue and expenditures that we've already reported to you. There's no changes in those, but just to keep those on everybody's dashboard. And then, talk to you about the information and the feedback we received from the community through the Thought Exchange, the Budget Thought Exchange. Just kind of the high-level overview, the report is available online and has been sent to you as well. They can be looked at in a lot of different ways, but I want to make sure we give you an overview of that and where they've kind of translated to us for budget priorities as we keep thinking about the development of this year's budget, and talk about the next steps, where we go from here. Again, just a reminder, currently, the preliminary budget stands at just over $100 million, an increase of 6.9% or 7.4% in terms of the expenditures that are being budgeted for. And the pieces of that are salaries and wages up just over 7%. Overall, that doesn't mean people's salaries are going up 7%, that's spending in that particular area, so for the number of people. And when we're bringing positions back in federally funded positions, that area will grow as well. Employee benefits are up 5%, and that would include health insurance, the retirement systems that we pay into, et cetera. Those aren't our retirements. Those are systems required by statute to pay into. BOSI's costs up just over 10%, supplies and services 10 and 1/2, and the debt transfer area up 7 and 1/2% as well. area up 7 and 1/2% as well. In terms of, how does it break down for allocation of unrestricted spending and how then the revenue coming in gets allocated to particular areas? Foundation aid is 5.9 million dollars of the increase in revenues, and we would look at the tax levy being just about a million dollars, budgeted for a million dollars right now. That would allow for the contract wages benefits, again, to go up just under 3 million dollars. Financial planning in the yellow to go up a million dollars. Mental health interventions, as well as a big funding portion in our budget. Tuition services, contract transportation, which is of course an increase as well, that that is all being paid for through these increased revenues, both foundation aid and tax levy. And then new positions, class size, continue to keep class sizes low, and the mandated services, increases in our costs in those areas also, and other inflationary factors within the budget. We're experiencing those like people are at home in their budget. The salary and wage budget factors that we would point out to you, those contractual increases and the increase in the minimum hourly wages. So we negotiated new contractual agreements at the end of last year, and we have to budget for those, of course, each year, and the increase in hourly wage has to be accounted for as well. And then new positions related to continuity and programs and aid. Three teachers at the K through five level to maintain small class sizes, and in some cases be able to decrease that. The chart on the right-hand size, right-hand side shows you the preliminary class size allocations and what it means for the ratio and the number of students in every class. So as of November of '22, we have 12 kindergarten sections, we would love to increase that to 13 for next year, 12 in grade one, 13 for next year, 11 in grade two, we would maintain 11, 10 in grade three would go up to 11 next year, so that accounts for the three FT increases, and then maintain 11 at both fourth and fifth grade. And you can see the impact then, a kindergarten is going from 20 students on average in each class to 18.2. In the first grade change, 19.3, we'd be looking actually because of the big number there, 23.4. That class would currently be at 20, so it'll go up a little bit next year. And then at grade three, where the other increase is seen, we'd go from 24 down to 20.6. And then we're bringing positions that are currently federally funded, the expiring federal dollars, commonly referred to as the COVID dollars, in the Brighton Support Center, literacy intervention, math intervention, reading, school counselor, school psychologist, bringing those into the general fund, so they're not dependent, dependent on that grant funding or that one-time federal money. Those are a regular part of our budget, and those positions are then considered permanent so long as we don't decide to make program changes going forward, those would move over. And then the budget factors relative to BOSI's, both in business and technology, funding the one-to-one repair, the replacement program, and upgrades to the applications and our infrastructure. We're particularly focused on the cybersecurity risks, filtering, Microsoft Office, and SMS/FMS upgrades as well. And then in special education, the increase in the number of students attending programming at BOSI's, that is a more cost-efficient and often effective approach to supporting some of our students, there's an increase in that cost. And then itinerant services that we are providing to private schools with more students who we service in those schools, both Brighton students and students in those schools that are, of other districts, attending the schools that are within Brighton, we are reimbursed for some of those costs as well by their home district. Services and supplies, we mentioned to you last time, some of the notable increases, change in legal fees, we're budgeting additionally for utilities and custodial as well, up $300,000. This is again, the cost you're seeing at home, ours is just on a bigger scale. The special ed contracts and tuitions I mentioned to you, up $164,000. And contract transportation, again, transportation costs increasing for everybody across the board, up over $544,000. And the additional funding for instructional technology learning spaces of $156,000. And the revenues we're projecting going into that, again, overall, we're looking at a difference of up 25% in state and federal aids overall. Sales tax up, an increase of 8%, investment income, that looks fantastic, 75% increase. That's $9,500 in a 100 million budget. So the percentage looks great, remember, the dollar amount is very, very small. We're not out investing people's money, we don't have the opportunity, ability, or desire to do that either. Refunds and recoveries up 12% as well, and as I mentioned, state and federally, it's up 25%. So the subtotal of those sources is 22%. And then in terms of financing sources, really for us, that's the property tax levy that we are anticipating going up 1.7%. We are not proposing, nor will we be proposing, going over the property tax cap that you adopted at the last meeting either. So the subtotal of property taxes rounded up to 1.8% or a total of 7.4%, which again, allows then for a 7.4% increase in spending. Community feedback is important to us in this process as well. We had one budget, community budget forum, we have another one coming up next week, and we went out and asked the community, what are your top priorities for the 2023-24 budget? Received feedback from 311 participants, they shared 152 thoughts. So 311 people went into the exchange. An interesting twist to it this year is we asked a question at the beginning about level of satisfaction. You know, 1 through 10, how satisfied are you? Again, one being not at all satisfied, 10 being extremely satisfied, 13% answered extremely satisfied. But if you look at the top three, so 7 through 10 was 48% of the total, and 69% if you look at the top four, if you go all the way from 6 through 10. So definitely weighted towards people satisfied. What is interesting is, on the report itself, when you click on the, the link that you're sending that will be posted on the website, you can filter the results or the thoughts, the ranking of the thoughts by level of satisfaction. So for example, if you took, say, the people that answered 1 through 5, so not at all satisfied, to the middle of the range, and you just click on those five indicators, you see where the thoughts rank, the ratings rank for all the thoughts for just that group of people. And then if you take just the most satisfied people, the top five, and search, you see a really interesting difference in what is most important to people. And the analysis, I think, is in the eye of the beholder, so I wouldn't present to you tonight and assume that all not satisfied people feel one way and all satisfied people feel another way. I don't want to characterize people that way, but it is interesting for you to do that yourself and take a look at, what does that mean to you? How does that jump out at you in terms of what are people's priorities if they're satisfied versus not satisfied? This tonight is a holistic view at everybody, of everybody, 1 through 10. In terms of balance and who responded, pretty even across the buildings, across the board. Some community members without children in school, 18 members actually jumped in as well, I would attribute that to Dan and his ability to get more people signed up and receiving our e-news and understanding that we'd like them to participate, whether they have kids in school or not, I think that's great. Five people of caregivers, five caregivers of children attending programs at a school outside the district as well, and some private parochial school parents participate also, which is great. The wordle, I'm not sure how beneficial this is, other than a quick visual representation of the number of times particular words are used in people's responses, but accelerated programming excellence, retaining was a big concept through a lot of the thoughts, in other words, keep the great things that we have, don't cut programs, don't cut staff members, none of which we're proposing anyways, but people I think are in that mode of making sure we know, please don't cut the programs that are most important to us. The key thoughts, the top thoughts in the entire exchange, so of the 152, academic excellence, follow the Brighton blueprint, don't cut accelerated programs. A quote from the blueprint, so I love the fact, by the way, that people are digging into that, provide each student coursework that is challenging in order to promote individual growth. How can kids develop a growth mindset without challenging work? Great news, want to be very clear about something, we are not cutting any accelerated programs. There is no budget reduction for any accelerated programs. So we are discussing and we are going to be shifting the accelerated math program, shifting the program. We are not cutting the program, and there is zero budget impact, it's the same number of staff. We're talking about a programmatic change that has very important philosophical reasons why, but we are not cutting any accelerated programs nor will be doing that. Second thought, providing rigorous courses and curriculum that meet the needs of all levels of learners and challenges students to continue growth. If academic excellence is actually valued, it has to be prioritized in order to prepare our children for the future. Couldn't agree more. In fact, the programmatic shift, we think will expose more children to challenge and acceleration, just approaching it differently, particularly third grade. Fortunately for all of us, Dr. Allison Rea, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, has been working on this project and will be presenting right after me because clearly in the exchange, there needed to be some clarification around accelerated programming and what we are or are not doing. And then maintain strong programs to continue Brighton's tradition of excellence. Couldn't agree more, great feedback, those are the top three thoughts in the exchange from everybody. The algorithm, the computer looks at particular themes and puts into buckets the different themes that arise in the exchange, and then shows you by priority area where people are at for the thoughts that go into there. Again, when you hover over these bars in the report, you can look at the specific thoughts that were under, for example, accelerated math, or academic excellence, or administration, or class sizes, or taxes, or the arts, whatever it might be, you can take a look specifically at those thoughts. Some examples of those, for example, the accelerated math thoughts, the top thought, follow the Brighton blueprint, don't cut accelerated programs. Couldn't agree with more, not going to. How could it possibly be that math acceleration is being cut? Great news, it's not. Mandating that students tread water in math rather than continuing to grow is not right. Fair point. What many of these thoughts reminded us of is the importance to communicate really clearly around the shift in accelerated math for next year. So my response is not one at all of sarcasm or cynicism, but rather a good reminder that we need to go out and make sure we're explaining to people clearly exactly what we're doing. We are not cutting that program. To the point, the third comment, please, please do not cut accelerated math opportunities. Some kids are not gifted at sports or in the arts, but are gifted in academics. Great point. We just think that a shift in the program is actually going to help expose more kids to coursework and give a better entry point for students, so that more over time will be a part of that type of program. Academic excellence, again, top thoughts in that area, provide rigorous courses, curriculum, meet the needs of all levels of learners, challenging students to continue to grow, maintain strong academic programs, academic excellence, hiring and retaining excellent teachers. Absolutely. And by the way, couldn't be more proud of the staff that are here currently, or the staff that are starting with us each year. We really feel like, we had the opportunity to review and have conversations about some staff members with our board tonight, leading up to tenure recommendations, there are incredible people that are working here. Nicole really is at the table with you each and every meeting is a great example of that. So couldn't agree more. When we talk about it, every year we own that part of our budget, looking at that being our biggest cost area, which is what it should be. We are a people-centric business, that's what we should be investing in. Couldn't agree more. Administrative stability at French Road, a great reminder tonight, as we have LaShara here visiting with us, sadly, I say visiting because we miss working with LaShara, who is in incredible position in the city with a tremendous level of responsibility and opportunity to impact change in the place that she grew up in and went to school and is very excited about. We were heartbroken, LaShara was excited for the opportunity, heartbroken to leave Fraz, certainly not the plan for LaShara or for any of us, but we're in that hiring process now. We would like nothing more than that same administrative stability. Keeping principals, the one form of administrator that interacts with kids, you seem unable to retain them, although I know Dr. Hall's not here tonight, he is definitely retained for a very long time, as is Matt Tappin, and Danielle Edmonds has signed a 27-year contract, so she just doesn't know that, but an unbelievable person that impacts our kids. I think about, man, I've mentioned this a couple of times lately, the kids walking across the stage now are Matt's kids, and we do recognize how important that is and want nothing more than that type of stability. However, if that type of stability meant Allison staying at French Road, don't get that comfortable, because we miss you terribly over here as well. We had the opportunity when Allison came here also to have an incredible person impact the whole district. So the hope would be, of course, in the process that we achieve that, but we want excellence for as long as we can get it. It's great when it's Matt Tappin and Tom Hall tenure, and Danielle Edmonds tenure, but it is also fantastic when we could have it for even just a little while with LaShara. So we're very much looking forward to the process of filling Fraz, thinking about that notion also. Keep class sizes low, we completely agree. No teacher cuts, please, absolutely, and we're not proposing any. In fact, adding staff positions, low class size and funding for our youngest learners, and as you saw at the beginning when I talked about the funding for staff, that's what we're focused on, is low class size, small class size, we recognize is important in this community and to our kids and staff. Provide clubs to students. Good news, also included in this year's budget is a proposal of several new stipends for new clubs at French Road, the middle school, and the high school, those are all included. Student clubs, Brighton does a horrible job with student clubs, we have no FRC robotics team or an elementary school chess club, it's embarrassing. I share this with full vulnerability, that we may see that differently, but this is somebody's opinion and that's important. We may not have those clubs, we do have other clubs, we have a huge number of clubs at the middle and high school, we could build our capacity at the younger levels, and we'll continue to look at doing that over time. We also recognize, though, at the younger level, our kids are stretched very thin with outside school activities also, that parents are involved in. So there's always a conversation about whether or not our kids actually have the capacity to do that. And remember, the French Road day starts later and ends later. Having after-school clubs has not always been something that parents would have opted for, and early morning clubs would impact the activities that our kids are involved in currently in terms of the arts, which are very important also there. So there's, you know, the potential for addition, but subtraction when we add as well, so we want to be very conscious of that. And then other thoughts around kids, keep accelerated programs, especially math and science. More extended study, speech, reading resources for all students who need extra support, to both be on par and excel, not just those who fall below. My child feels uncomfortable using the bathroom at Brighton High School at TCMS due to inappropriate and illegal activities. If you are, as a parent, reading the messages sent home by Mrs. Edmonds and Dr. Hall, we agree with you, and we are constantly in the mode of working with our students to help them understand making better choices. I do not want to characterize our kids, though, all of our students has kids who are spending time in the bathroom doing things they're not supposed to be doing. But Dr. Hall's been very open, particularly at the high school level, about vaping in particular and about challenges, and telling kids, you know, those are not things that should be happening, number one, at all, from a health perspective, number two, in school, and absolutely not, of course, in our bathrooms as well. So we do feel like we're addressing this all of the time, but we would recognize, yeah, it's a fair point, and kids do not want to be around that. So if you're somebody who's doing that, recognize that it makes people feel uncomfortable and you shouldn't be. But I feel like Dr. Hall and Ms. Edmonds are on that, working hard on that with their teams as well. Please consider evaluating administration costs, there have been increases in this portion of the budget that appear to outpace resources in the classroom. And I only point this out as a point of fact, that's actually not true. We have a relatively thin administrative team, added one position last year mid-year, Mr. Green's position. And I say added, it actually took the place of other administrative positions. Mrs. Edmonds was in an instructional administrative, instructional technology administrative position that we did end up trading essentially for the position that Mr. Green is in, and we never filled an additional assistant principal position that was reduced at the high school, funding that was used for the remote advanced placement classes and other electives that we wanted to add as well. So we've had some changes there, and the admin, the assistant for humanities position that used to exist is now an assistant director, previously had an assistant director in Deanna Spagnola's program, the student support services area. In other words, what I'm saying is, we still actually haven't completely restaffed in that area and have a very thin administrative team. So overall, that funding in that area would not have increased over time to the same degree, certainly not to the degree that we've added on the other side of that. We also agree, though, that our resources should be with kids in classrooms, and that's something we've supported for a long time. So these are clarifications I'm offering, not at all defensively, but so that people know what actually is the circumstance. Responsible spending taxes are already extremely high, want to ensure that every penny spent is of meaningful value to student education. That could be the theme of our budget process, that every penny spent meaningful value to student education. And no tax increase, after years of tax increases and increase in state aid, we should be able to keep the property tax burden flat. Our challenge with regard to that, that we will continue to talk about through the budget process, is our cap number is already very low. So the tax increase promises to already be very low. We're also excited that the Whole Foods development now is able to move forward, and additional tax revenue will come to the community from one payer, in other words, that property would defray the cost for other taxpayers. So we would expect that the rate announced in August will even benefit from the additional payment of taxes on that particular property. So if you fall behind, though, in terms of your levy growth over time, so for example, if there was a zero increase going into next year, that's a million dollars in revenue that the district would not receive and would have to overcome eventually, right? Because that revenue, our costs continue to grow up, go up, outpacing that additional cost and revenue. So to make up that levy later on, when, when state aid is not available, would require a significant tax increase, and we focus over time on making sure that we have a moderate, low, minimal tax increase that is balanced over a period of time and does not spike. And then academic excellence, offered under the arts category, opportunity to learn music in the arts, more arts and music offerings, my child wants to go to college for art and music. Mental health, healthier food options in the cafeteria, proper nutrition has a direct correlation to brain development, behavior, mental and physical health. Academic excellence, mental health support required for that as well, and mental health support 14. So we continue to focus on mental health in this year's budget and commit, been committed to those COVID-related, I'd say COVID-funded positions, that include several mental health positions. positions, now being brought into the general fund, so they're not at risk of being reduced going forward. They are part of the program, so complete agreement. Later start times came up again, I would just point out that we did talk about that and talked about that in a final report given last year. We will revisit that again in five years from when that report was received last year, but that that was not an option that our community overall supported when we went out and polled and used thought exchange. We received a lot of feedback, that one, for both the cost, but also the impact on our youngest students, that it was not a favorable approach in the district. So, we will revisit that again, but that's not currently on the docket of proposed changes. We'll do another study again in approximately four years' time. And then, interestingly, some of the differences, so the platform will take two separate and distinct groups of people who have rated thoughts in similar ways. So, on this particular screen, 83 people, the blue group, we'll call them, had similar starring patterns. So, they get lopped into one group as people who are like-minded, and 52 people in the green group were like-minded, and it compares where they were apart or different, and what kinds of things they agree on. So, if you think about this from a political campaign perspective, a politician might use this to understand what the issues are that many people will agree to. Unfortunately, they would also perhaps look at it as where are the dividing lines among people also. And in this case, 83 people were on the side of rating highly the thought about mental health, absolutely need to have enough mental health staff in each building to meet the needs, academic career cannot be met, et cetera, et cetera. The 52 people on the other side of that, though, didn't agree with that entirely. They just see that differently, and they rated that low. Teacher and staff wellness is a priority, followed by student wellness. 83 people rated that high, the 52 people did not rate that high. On the other side of the ledger, so the same people that rated those thoughts low said, don't increase the property tax, reduce budget size, cut expenses, that was high for them. Equity efforts are important, but should not be the focus of school age for our kids. They rated that high and rated the other ones low. But what do these two people, these two groups of people agree on? Academic excellence, follow the blueprint, and don't cut accelerated programs. French Road needs stable leadership, this year has felt very chaotic for kids, parents, and teachers. So, it's just interesting to look at the differences between what people are thinking in our community. Honor and respect both of those, think about how we can find compromise in the work that we do, without compromising the importance of many topics that we receive lots of different feedback. Important also to point out that this is one source, right? The feedback you get as board members from people, the public comments that are offered, the community forums that we open ourselves up to, the PTSA meetings, we'll present a rotary, we'll go to any group and have conversations about the budget, we receive feedback all of the time. This is one source of data, but it's helpful to just keep that in context as well. What do people agree on, though? Accelerated program, academic excellence, stable leadership. Again, in this difference, 88 people, 46 people, they agree on those two items very, very clearly. They disagree on start times, and very clearly, one group, the 88, group of 88 people rates that high, 46 people don't. They didn't have particular items that they thought similarly on high that the blue group disagreed with. Last example of that, again, academic excellence, follow the blueprint, was an agreed-upon topic. Educational online platforms that allow assignments, submissions, grades, communication, to be all in one platform, and we've tried very hard to continue to standardize those, we'll continue to think about that. But where do they disagree? Amount of money in the budget affects our tax dollars. 61 people, 50 people feel differently about that. Cut positions that were created with one-time federal COVID funds, responsible financial management. In these two groups of people, there's disagreement in that as well. Where do they disagree on the other side? Project to improve high school entrance with newly acquired land, it's a safety issue, and the high school parking lot needs to be better as well. They rate those very high, and they rate low, cutting the positions that were added around COVID. So, from that, and from our conversations and our discussions with you, and our work with staff each and every day that are looking at what we should be doing for kids, all of our program evaluation that we're doing, we recognize, one, the need to minimize the tax impact, and to continue to be focused on that. Stewards of the community's resources, that's been important to you, that's important to us in recommending it to you, that continues to be a priority. Ensuring that resources are targeted to student needs and staff supporting their needs. Being very respectful of that, don't cut programs, don't cut staff, academic excellence, that's a huge priority in our community, we recognize that, that will continue to be a priority in this budget process as well. And build fiscal stability. We are a very fiscally stable place, and we have that. We need to continue to build that fiscal stability over a period of time. We have more foundation aid now. We need to recognize what it could mean over time, when the foundation aid formula is redesigned, and next year, when the promise of going from 60% to 80% to 100% in next year's budget is realized, what happens then after that? Bringing those positions in that were COVID-funded, that are so focused on the needs of kids, to the general fund right now with foundation aid that we will be getting next year, is a way to make sure that we are financially stable in the long run, so we're not having to go back to the community to say, we need a much bigger tax increase to make up for those federal dollars, because we're not dependent on those positions. So, we're doing it now while the resources are available, which creates, again, that stability for the long term. And supporting new and innovative programs, and continue to think about how we target the needs of our kids in our spending allocations, we think is most important as well. Do you have any questions for me? We'll continue with the next steps of the budget process, sorry, Larry, I interrupted.
No, I was gonna say, I appreciate the, all of the efforts we're making to get feedback from the community, and that the feed, the community is giving feedback.
Yep, we do too. I mean, it's an important part of the democratic process. If you're voting on it, we want your feedback, we want to know more. That's who we are in this district. So, we'll continue to monitor our budget to actual projections, and make sure we're adjusting in the proposed spending plan for what happens in our programs this year, and what our needs are going into next year, for students specifically, and collaborate with building principals, department managers, to find efficiencies, make sure we have the right resources in place, and to evaluate our spending allocations and our priorities. Looking at fund balance, also included in that notion of fiscal stability is less reliance on using money from the savings account, right? The appropriate fund balance to support the budget. That's a risky strategy we've had to use to make sure we don't cut programs over time, but less reliance going into the future on that will be important, and that's included in this year's budget. And then, continue to listen to the school community and gather feedback, being responsive to needs and everybody's priorities are, is important also. So, the second piece of this is a very brief overview from Allison about the accelerated math conversation, so that we want to be very clear with people, we're not cutting accelerated math programming, but redesigning program to a strategy that we think will be more effective, more inclusive, and more thoughtful for our students.
Thank you. Okay, just brief presentation here, but just want to give a little more context for everybody, as some of the questions that came up at the thought exchange, and wanted to just provide a little more information, so everyone has the same information. So, just a little history about math acceleration, it's been going on for a long time in Brighton, but last year, we had our math program evaluation, and one of the pieces that came out of the evaluation was just considering a review of the math acceleration process, and a review of the research around math mindset and our Brighton student data. So, that's kind of what drove us into looking at this this year. And I have some points up here, but I just want to speak to them a little bit for all of you, and take any questions that you might have. We're not getting rid of accelerated math at French Road, so I want to make that loud and clear, we are just shifting what that looks like for when kids would begin to enter the program. So, this is really only impacting students entering third grade next year, and there have been some really thoughtful decisions around why we've made that decision for our third-grade learners in Brighton. We have seen, through the research and through looking at our student data of our learners across, beyond French Road and into the middle school and the high school, that there is a big impact on mindset of our students at the elementary level. So, as students enter French Road, there's a lot of shifts, they're learning a new school, there, there's social emotional learning that's still happening, and they're still developing themselves as a learner. At the same time, we want all students to feel comfortable and confident in their ability to learn. So, math mindset, and mindset in general, is something that we looked at when we considered this decision. So, thinking about our students, knowing that all students have the opportunity in their class to have access to what they need across the curriculum, from our students who are struggling, to our students who are high achieving, giving them the opportunity to see themselves as a math learner, to see themselves as somebody who can participate in things that are hard and challenging, and work across the classroom with their peers who are of varying levels, is something that is important for children when they're eight years old. So, putting students in kind of a tracked situation at a very young age often impacts their mindset, and they're thinking about their own ability as an individual learner. We don't want to exclude anyone from doing acceleration. We embrace acceleration, we want to meet all of the needs of our learners here in Brighton, and that's one thing that we love about our school community. That's why we are not getting rid of this at French Road, just kind of adjusting our expectations a bit for what this will look like as students enter the building. We also, you know, don't know the students as well as math learners at that level, and it gives us an opportunity to continue to enhance our instruction, enhance the curriculum, and, you know, find the right path for all of our students. Additionally, the tracking that sometimes happens at the elementary level actually leads students to not being able to participate in accelerated courses as they get older, because they've developed kind of a fixed mindset about this is my ability as a learner. It's not going to impact kids who are going down that path where they're going to get into acceleration, double acceleration, take more of those math classes in high school. This won't shift that path for those students, but instead, it'll open some opportunity for all students. So, as a school building, French Road and at every school building looks at student data to make sure we're being as inclusive as possible of all students that are, should be part of these programs, and we'll continue to do that. But with less tracking at that elementary level, at the very early elementary level, we'll hopefully be able to provide more opportunities for all of our students later So, as we get into next school year, just to, again, say, to be really clear, that we're reviewing our approach to acceleration for just our entering third-grade students at French Road, we're going to continue to offer enrichment and differentiation in math class, and to a higher ability than we do right now. We're going to spend some time reviewing our curriculum, looking at our work that's happening in everyday math for the third-grade students, and making sure that embedded in our daily instruction are opportunities for students to really be pushed to a higher level, or get what they need where they are, and most importantly, work together. So, looking at how students learn across the board with heterogeneous groups will help us to set them up to be successful wherever they are in the math program, and we'll spend some time reviewing that this summer, preparing for next year, as we welcome our third graders. This is what the process looks like in general at French Road and 12 Corners Middle School. So, the process will not change for anyone who is a current French Road student right now. If kids are in third grade, accelerated math, they'll continue on to fourth grade, fourth and fifth grade will still have accelerated math, and we will still review our third-grade students this year at French Road, to see if anyone else should be included in single or double acceleration, and the process will remain the same at the middle school, as it has been. Any questions?
No, it's a great clarification. I know that some of the board members had received some feedback from within the community. Some had heard things, but nobody had real facts, so appreciate you taking the time to sort of outline the strategy, because it will consider all kids, and it will allow kids to continue to accelerate.
I think also, this was extremely helpful for clarification, because, you know, we've also all had the chance to review the thought exchange feedback, and it seems like, you know, this concept of acceleration is important to the Brighton community, and I think that, you know, just the clarification that we're not cutting anything, if anything, this is, you know, it's more inclusive, it's more equitable, it's just, you know, we're evolving, and, you know, this is cutting-edge stuff that you're bringing us, Dr. Rio. So, I think it's a great presentation, and I think it'll help answer a lot of questions.
Great job.
We'll now move on to item eight, which is the reports. We've received the financial reports, and questions on those, because those are up for approval.
So moved, do you need a motion to approve?
No, motion to approve if I can answer reports.
Second.
Move by Karen, seconded by Sue. All those in favor? It doesn't look like Eliza is able to make it from a student rep standpoint, we'll hope to get a report from her in the future. And now, we'll go to Board of Education, and before we quickly go around with the reports, and we'll remind everybody that board elections are coming up in May, and there will be a seat, three seats up for election, anybody's interested in running. Probably not a great time to do that before we go through all the stuff we do, but just wanted to bring that to the forefront. Labor Relations is first, that's mine. Since our last update, we haven't had a meeting yet, that will be next week on March 22nd. Going to be more trends in regards to Rochesteria Health Proposals and things like that, associated with medical benefits and all, so that will be next Wednesday, and I will be at that one. Information Exchange.
Information Exchange is tomorrow, and the Fairport Superintendent and Director of Technology Operations will discuss Parents Square stakeholder engagement in your community.
I am planning on attending.
Me too.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you. Legislative.
That's me. So, the Legislative Committee actually was in Albany on March 8th, advocating for public schools together as an organization, the Monroe County School Board Association, and actually, our debrief is tomorrow, so I will have a better update for you. But our next meeting is in April, and I believe we're going to have a couple of regents visiting us, right? In April.
Next up is BOCES, and I do have a report here from our former board president, Mark Kokonovich. As with us and every other school district, we're in the budget season. And so, Mark provided a couple updates with regards to the review of the transportation budget, as well as some of the challenges all of us are experienced, experiencing with student transportation, and then reviewed a bunch of budgets, 2023, 2024 budgets, including the administrative and capital budget for BOCES Monroe, one, excuse me. Finally, and that sort of ties in with Legislative Committee, Mark was one of the people who made an advocacy trip to Albany on March 8th. Trip included 20 area Board of Ed members, along with three superintendents and assistant superintendents, in total representing 13 of our 23 association districts, so great representation in Albany. Other board member reports, we'll start with Karen and work towards me.
March is a busy month. So far, I have met with both the Curriculum Committee and the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Committee. Both of those groups are beginning to wrap up their work, they both have some great documents to present to the board in the coming months, so I'm actually, I'm really excited to see how our systems work, and then how we use data to work together to tighten them up.
It's good stuff. I've had a meeting this morning with the Monroe County School Boards Association Steering Committee to work on their budget for next year. We met with Audit this afternoon, where we spoke about some corrective action plans, reviewed our claims audit report, and talked about some capital project planning. And then, tomorrow I'm with PTSA, Thursday I'm with TCMS at the school-based equity team.
Busy.
Run for the board, they said, it'll be fun, they said.
Only two meetings a month.
That's not so bad.
All I have to report is, we represented the Board of Education at the district-wide dodgeball competition. Perhaps not our best showing, thank you very much. Winning teams, next year, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be real next year, so everyone be ready. Mr. Tappin, I'm looking at you, sir. We also have our FRES equity meeting on Thursday, that Dr. Rio will be leading. I'm not sure I will be able to attend, but I will get the minutes and report back to you following.
Do you also want to quickly mention what you're doing on 22nd?
I am also serving as the Board of Ed representative for our FRES Principal Hiring Committee, so very much looking forward to that, and it should be, should be a good day.
Thank you.
I have nothing additional.
You could talk about, two Saturdays ago, what you did on Saturday at the high school.
Oh, two Saturdays ago, Larry and I both were at Festival of Ideas, where there were over 650 children who spent the afternoon going to three different workshops each, and it was just incredible to see them coming into the school, they were so excited, and to see, you know, some of our littlest learners in the high school on a Saturday, it's just really an amazing thing, and I think it's something that's very unique to Brighton, and thank you to the PTSA for always, all these years, 30-something years managing it, but we should really all be very proud, because it's really incredible. It's super special.
Former board member Martha Scrumamilo continues to just run a great event, and the building's folks were there in force, just making sure everything worked, lights turn on, doors shut. It's the only, it's a typical Brighton event, and Julian and I stood there at the entrance as somebody walked by carrying a miniature fighter plane, somebody else came by with a fire extinguisher and an axe, somebody else came by with a macrame blanket, and somebody else came by with an enormous fake bat, and I went, yeah, sure, whatever, Festival of Ideas, right? What else could it be?
No, we had kids flying from the ceiling in the gymnasium, it was amazing.
You know, one thing I'll say about festival, if your kids are on the fence about going, please, please send them, you know, my middle child found a lot of the things that became very special to him. He met with the BHS morning show in middle school, and then he did that for four years. He learned to fence, and then he became a competitive fencer. It's, you really can find your place at the festival in ways you don't expect, so worth your time.
Great point, thank you. Thank you, Julian. Christina?
I have the New York State
I have, the New York State School Board Association meets, the DEI Committee meets at the end of March and then Brighton Teachers Policy Board meeting in April. So I'll review those at the next, at the April meeting.
Okay. Construction meeting yesterday, as we always do. I do this every time because it's worth doing. Our facilities people are amazing in terms of making sure things happen the way they should, as well as just fixing the things that break on any given day. So kudos to them. Lou gave a really in-depth review of sort of upcoming construction projects. Lot happening there, a lot behind the walls that we don't see and we'll have an HVAC discussion shortly, but all great there. And I had the opportunity today to be the board rep for the TCMS, assistant principal interviews, some great candidates out there, very exciting. Both Lou and Danielle did an outstanding job facilitating a team, really, really thorough process, happy to be part of it. So thanks to them for that. Anything else we missed? Okay. Nicole.
Yes. Thank you always for the opportunity to share some of the things teachers are doing. We'll start at Council Rock, back to the mindfulness piece. We, in March, we celebrate Mindful March, both as students and staff. So every day we receive something that helps students with their mindfulness. We also have a calendar that we can mark so that every time we do a mindfulness activity, we can mark it and then submit it at the end of the year. Some of those themes are take three calm breaths or pause to watch the clouds. And it's just a wonderful thing to have the kids just pause for that moment, have, have us encourage them to pause. And then, of course, we're asked to pause too as a staff and have our own calm corner and guided meditations, which are just really nice, or shooting basketball, all sorts of fun things. Katie Fallon really drove the, the use of our HAB Lab, our Habits of Mind Lab at Council Rock. And she used a green screen with Mrs. Ayalo and Mrs. Genzel's class for their All About Animal projects. Hopefully you clicked on the links. They were just incredible. They traveled to the Arctic and read their reports about their animals and it, they were just incredible. Katie Fallon also at French Road, she worked with Mrs. Pettit's class using the Sphero robots, which were borrowed from Bosse's, to help with Black History Month projects. They researched, wrote a timeline and encoded the Sphero to travel along the poster and every time it stopped, it would tell a fact about the person's life. They took persistence teamwork, trial and error, lots of math skills. Each robot, you could have clicked on one to see the planning and then the final product. So hopefully you checked those out. Mr. Simmons class, fifth grade class also used the robots, telling a story that they wrote. They had lights, animations, brought the story to life. And again, there was a photograph of the students coding, really nice. For, in, they've been also practicing mindfulness and thinking about who they are. And I love this quote in Bruin Times, students have been learning about their own identities, what makes them them inside and out. Fourth grade has been creating bio bags and fifth grade has been making identity trees. Beautiful stuff. At TCMS, they have this beautiful display, reading gives you wings and hopefully you checked out that PowerPoint of the students and some staff standing in front of the wings. And at the high school, Algebra One teachers worked last summer to create a performance ta, task, sorry, where students picked an item that they would buy at graduation and then they invested the money in a CD to see if they would have enough money to purchase it. They zoomed with Mr. Don Pulano, a Brighton resident and investment banker, to learn about how this relates to the real world and if they could actually do that themselves. Masterminds, so Heather Bonadonna wanted to make sure we shared about some of the clubs. Masterminds have, has a varsity and JV. They had another win for varsity and the JV team has not lost yet. So hopefully you can see the names of the participants. Mock Trial Team also won their first case, winning against Brockport. And there was an artist who, author artist who came to visit and talk about what it's like to be a graphic novelist. The sophomores are reading Persepolis. So he spoke about how drawing is a form of storytelling and that people have been representing that for tons of thousands of years and how to use that to help structure your story. We had two students that went to Buffalo State for the Poetry Out Loud competition. And then congratulations to many musicians, to the senior high honor band, the BA, the jazz band, vocal ensembles, and then in the high, sorry, senior high, all county ensembles. There was band, vocal and orchestra students all accepted. And then the last thing I have to share is Sarah Jesu's painting class. They were given a challenge with unconventional materials. They had to pick a theme, the materials, and do a lot of experimenting to create and then write an artist statement about their why. They had to also curate their own show and the photographs just have some of the students, not all the students that participated in the show, but just some really beautiful steps of work that they had.
Display case was really cool.
Yeah. Oh, just putting these together is, I feel so honored to be able to take some of the work that people do and try and present it to you guys in a really meaningful way. That's really nice. Thank you so much.
That's right, too, you do. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Peter.
Well, thank you. We had a very successful Festival of Ideas and it was very well-attended and we appreciate all of the volunteers who helped out. And after that, it is status quo. More report at the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Superintendent.
I think I've reported a lot. I, I just would comment, we did send a communication out, as you're aware, that a staff, a former staff member was in the media, reported to have been arrested, you know, in charge with several disturbing crimes, having nothing to do with school. I want to be very clear about that. And we have, everybody who works here goes through a very rigorous hiring process that includes background check, that includes fingerprinting. And unfortunately, things that occur outside of school having nothing to do with us sometimes impact our school environment in terms of the anxiety and concern that that causes when people receive that information. And so we feel very badly about that kind of concern it causes for people, but want to reassure them that, one, there is zero suspicion whatsoever, and I spoke myself to an investigator today from the state police, that these issues have anything to do with the school environment whatsoever. They will continue to monitor that and keep us informed at this point. But again, zero concern for students or for our environment. That doesn't make it necessarily any less concerning for many people and we understand that also. People do continue to go through a rigorous process and they will going forward and we always review that as well. But this person also went through that process and unfortunately, issues outside of school were not known to that process and wouldn't have been uncovered by that process either. So if people have questions, they should let us know, but including the communications information around a tip line and support for families through VIVONA and support from law enforcement as well. But as always, contact your child's counselor, teacher or principal for additional supports and information also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item nine, there's some bids for, cooperative bids for both art supplies and magazines. Any questions on those? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Julian.
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item ten is approval of just some construction contracts related to some FRES HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. Took me a second there, sorry. Just not trying to get some work done, much-needed work. That's the example of that behind-the-wall work, stuff that you don't see, but more efficient circulation of air, things like that. Any question on those contracts? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Julian.
Second.
Seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
To the consent agenda, there are personnel changes, recommendations from both the Committee on Special Ed and the Committee on Preschool Special Ed. Field trip approval that took place actually last week. I don't know what this is, but I'm going. It's a meat raffle in May for the softball boosters. And then, as I think Susan and others mentioned, a dodgeball game on the ninth that included some temporary tattoos. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Susan.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those are not as temporary as one might.
I don't want any discussion on who got tattoos and where they are. We're gonna keep on vowing forward.
Peggy's came off without any issue.
Oh, forget it. Forget it.
Apparently your wonderful sweet skin and my cheeks are very different.
Oh, boy. Said it, Larry.
Just, yeah, just, just a couple of, a very, a couple of very quick things. How do I come back from that? One is, we did, a few of us had the opportunity to celebrate Dr. McGowan's win as New York State and National Superintendent of the Year in Albany, just a great event, great learning opportunity. Just very proud to be part of that, thankful and grateful, Dr. McGowan, that you lead us. And I would say this equally, very proud of a session we did after the February twenty-eighth board meeting, which was a community forum on anti-racism. Got a lot of great feedback from a very well-attended forum. We're putting that into our current DEI plan to figure out how we can be better and that will be available in a couple of weeks to sort of say, here's how we expect to get better in that area. Just, it's a great example of we're continuing to work hard and we also have a lot to continue to learn in that whole venue. So just thankful that the community is taking the time with us.
I just want to say thank you for your previous comment and for celebrating too. It was that much more meaningful with this great team. So thank you.
Our next meeting is March twenty-eighth, which is, is the executive budget proposal slash budget hearing. And thanks to Evan, our student assistant tonight, and as always, Mike and Bill behind the camera, thank you to you guys. Anybody else? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.